Jessica. Uh, Carrie.
Carrie, probably you know Marlboro.
Gabe. Eric. Sue.
Sue, Sophie, Marlboro.
Okay, and Mike Morris Seaman. We'll circle back real quick to see if, uh, Lori, did she join us? No? And/or Jessica, did she join us? No. Alright. Uh, from the administration, um, Scott.
Scott Wesley, acting superintendent.
Uh, Penny? Penny?
I'm Penny Bruegel.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Penny.
Uh, Dr. Shorsey.
Michael Shorsey, middle school principal.
Hey Eva.
Eva Allen, business manager.
Women of the administration. Okay, and student representative is Lily. And Rowan?
Rowan, acting superintendent.
Miss anybody? Okay, great. Uh, we can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, I could just, one thing, uh, Gabe, I have to ask you again to serve as our timekeeper. And the only other thing I would just ask is, uh, thanks to some veteran board support from Sue, she reminded me of a couple of key things that I need to make sure we implement. So, we went a little long in one of the meetings in the past, and so when we get to the nine-thirty mark, we definitely need to revisit whether or not we're going to continue the meeting or if we're going to bail on it because it's a policy issue. And then, um, also just, uh, if that comes to be, if it looks like we're pretty far off that, please bring that up so that, uh, we may visit some of the items that we don't necessarily have to go through, we may vote to table some of them. So if you could just kind of keep an eye on that format, I appreciate it. Alright, at this point, public comment. Hebron, Anover, and Marlboro, community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discuss only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. At this time, is there anybody present that would like to present for public comment? Please.
My name is Carol Guyer. I'm a resident of Hebron, and I'm here, um, to, uh, be support, uh, I'm representing Hebron Coalition of Diversity and Equity. And I'm here to see the, um, expected, um, presentation by the students with regard to the Columbus Day, um, proposals that they have. And, um, I look forward to hearing that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else present? Please, sir.
Uh, my name's Gary Gothier, also a resident here of Hebron. I hope this is the right venue, but I just wanted to comment with respect to what I'm seeing happening in our schools, uh, the use of movies as a form of education. Uh, it seems like that's been a pretty regular occurrence. So far, my children have watched movies titled Twelve Years a Slave, Maria, Full of Grace, Motorcycle Diaries, and just today I learned The Sea Inside. Uh, I won't go into detail with these movies, but my opinion on that is movies can be very subjective. I don't have time to look at these movies in advance of them being presented to my children. I would like to. I get these permission slips last notice. I don't have enough time to be able to spend time to look at these movies thoroughly to have an opinion. And I would like to have an opinion. So, unfortunately, my children are going to watch these movies, and, um, I feel that there's some messaging in there that may be inappropriate, whether it's subtle, sometimes it's very strong messaging. And as you know, every movie could be interpreted a little bit differently from one viewer to the next. If you watch or review critics and reviews on those movies, there's all kinds of different opinions. And why movies are being used as a form of education is beyond me. I feel that it's inappropriate, should not be there. Teachers should find other ways to educate their children rather than relying on movies.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone online, or, I'm sorry, anyone else present? Is there anyone online that would like to present public comment? Eric, anybody rising here? Oh, what's the name? Amy, if you are online, if you'd like to go ahead and present public comment?
Hi, my name is Amy DiMaggio, and I am a resident of Hebron. And, um, I, I am here to support the, um, the students and their conversation about, um, having Columbus, instead of Columbus Day, having, um, Hebron support and represent, or Ram support and represent, um, indigenous peoples' debt. I think it's a better reflection of, um, who we are as citizens and acknowledges indigenous peoples' community. That's first thing. Second thing, um, I would just like to make a comment about the gentleman who just commented about the movies. I believe strongly in, um, having multi, um, different ways of presenting information. We're really working hard, hopefully, the school is really working hard, to, um, develop our students to be critical thinkers. And things are going to be presented from one side and another side, and they need to learn and challenge themselves to develop a means of deciding what is real, what's not real, how they do it, how they not do it, and that's where the education comes from. And that, that skill that they're trying to teach is going to transcend any curriculum. And so, just want to point out that movies are an important part of a curriculum, if it's part of the curriculum. They're not showing The Three Stooges. They're throwing, they're showing things that are probably in the content of the material being presented, and it's another venue some kids don't learn very well with just hearing lectures. They can watch it, and then they read it, and then they can, there's a whole richness in providing different ways of, uh, presenting information. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online to present public comment? Yes, now, I can see you raising your hand online. Go ahead. I think you're on mute.
Indeed. Uh, Lily Rhoads, Slougham Road in Hebron. I'm looking forward to hearing a student presentation, um, regarding the Columbus Day. I'm curious what your thinking is, and, um, I'm encouraged by our students' initiatives on some, um, complicated issues. So I'm looking forward to hearing your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Anyone else present? I'm sorry.
I, sorry, I have a question. Are we going to have public comments afterwards, or?
There will be a second round of public comment at the end, yes. Anyone else online? Eric? No? Alright. Uh, item number four, add or deletion of any agenda items. Anyone? Go ahead, sir.
I, I'd like to, um, suggest adding a topic around a walk to support mental health.
Is this the, is this the, um, the Marlboro event? That's planned, or is this not an event that doesn't exist right now?
Uh, it's an event that's being planned, and I wouldn't necessarily say it's just Marlboro. I would say it's all three towns, but yes, I believe it's that topic, yes.
Okay, is that where we're going to do that?
Yeah, so if, um, we would just need a, um, the board members present and online, we'd need a vote of two-thirds of our members, so it'd be six people to approve the addition of that agenda. And then we would just add it to the, the business.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, so Sue, do you want to, uh, make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add, um, the topic of a walk to support mental health.
Okay. Alright, sorry, go one second. You, Carrie?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion on the subject? Okay, hearing no discussion, go to, um, we'll do a roll call, since we need two-thirds. Uh, Lauren? Mike?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Judy Bensicar? I'm sorry, Judy, might be on mute.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to send you, um, can I give a tiny bit of information?
Sure.
On, okay. Um, yeah, this is something that's been talked about honestly since about last Easter, so for about a year. And we see it as a community event, um, where people from the Ram, from the Greater Ram community would be involved to just, um, honor everyone. Um, everyone's lungs, you know, to do away with stigmas. So far, um, NAMI has definitely said, um, yes, to, to use their name, they're the National Association, I think, of Mental Illness. We cannot make the day of their walk because, um, Teresa Bryce-Jill and I both have children graduating college that day, so we're looking at the first weekend in June. And, and I can tell you that everybody is being exceptionally, exceptionally helpful. Our personnel, our, um, our safety people, or, you know, anything that, that has to do with traffic. And we're just, we're thinking around the lake right now. Sue, and AHM, I think, wanted to have a conversation with Amy, Amy, excuse me, Sue, Sophie, and me tomorrow. So, um, we're just looking at it as something, you know, it's a timely issue, it's a relevant issue, and just some kids would be home from college, and just that, I have the whole book of messages, everyone matters. So I, I'm like, yes, or a...
Okay. Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jessica? Carrie?
Yes.
Gabe?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And Mike, I will vote yes. Alright, that Carrie, so we will add that to the agenda.
Mike, the only other, this isn't an add or delete, but I, I'd like to suggest we move ten-four, which is the discussion on possible action regarding the race survey, um, to the spot immediately following the student presentation, only because we have Tressa Giudiano, the executive director of RAC, joining us remotely, so that will allow her to, um, get to that agenda. I'm not happy to sit with the others, so.
I don't believe we need a motion for that, but is there anybody that, uh, on the board that has an issue with, uh, with, uh, reorganizing that, that piece? Alright, then we'll do that. Okay, student representative reports. Look.
Hi, including everyone, nice to see you. Just gonna jump right into it. Prom for juniors is, I think, this weekend, so that's really exciting. Finally, I'm gonna get some of my dresses, wear my topsies, everything like that. And then Prom for seniors is, um, a, a month from, from there. So I think Thursday's April twenty-second, and ours is May twenty-first. And, um, in order to purchase a ticket, which at least for seniors is eighty dollars this year, you have to pay your class dues, which is thirty dollars a year, so a little more money. And another thing that I wanted to add at the last meeting, but forgot we have an Instagram for both the junior and senior girls, for them to show off their dresses, which I think is a really fun way to get, you know, everyone involved and excited about prom. You can post a picture of your dress, and it's more of like, post a picture of your dress when you despise it. But it's also fun to see what, to see what everyone's wearing. Um, and then there's obviously one senior as well. And I'm sure you all know, um, this past week was April break, and then a bunch of people were traveling now that it's more accessible, um, since COVID has sort of died down. But I'll be interested to see, um, the case count, because although, um, to get into the US, you have to test native. A lot of people traveled within the US, and I'm not sure how the testing works for that. And even there can be some false menus all over the area that could happen. Um, and then in terms of college, more and more people are committing. May first is the last day you can commit at all, and that's creeping up on us. And we also have an Instagram for that. You can show where you commit, uh, if you're playing a sport or a new major. So that's really exciting. Also gets people excited about, um, post-secondary education. And there are also scholarships that are available, like, um, either as for Marlboro, some are just for Hebron, some are just for Anover. There is a lot of different ones that cater to different, um, types of people who are going into post-secondary education. Like, I saw there was one about firefighters. There's a lot for education, minorities, everything like that, which I think is really great. And then, I think, two weeks from today is going to be the first AP exam. That's not just for seniors, for juniors, and sophomores as well. But from, um, I believe, like, May second onward, they go forward until the end of May. So next week is probably going to be a tough week for students because they're all going to be studying four exams, um, because it's sort of difficult. So I just wanted to let you all know about that. And then, lastly, um, I want to comment on the France-Morocco trip that was offered by the French teachers. I do not take French, but I went on it anyway, because I thought it was really fun. Um, and it was. I think it's a great opportunity for students, whether they've traveled or not, to get a better grasp on other cultures and other languages around the world. And it's a very accessible way for students to travel, just because, like, the trip's already planned, and, and parents don't have to worry about making all these reservations. They just sort of have to sign up and get everything situated with, um, passports and people like that. We got to meet, like, our passports executives, and it was very nice. I think it's, I think it's a great trip, I think. If we could do more, that would be awesome. But, uh, first of all, I would love to let everyone know that I committed to University of Vermont. I'm going to be studying global studies and hopefully a minor in art history and music.
Thank you.
Wow, congratulations.
Thank you.
Pearl?
Alright, so, yeah, she already kind of talked a little bit about junior prom, but just, you know, just continue adding to that, and that a lot of kids are excited. You know, like Lily said, you know, with the suits, tuxedos, dresses. Everybody's talking a lot about it, and it's exciting that we're able to, you know, have this in the afternoon. Last few years, you know, I haven't quite, we haven't got the weight, suit and water with COVID. So, yeah, it's this Saturday night at Glass and Mary Hills Country Club. And it's at six o'clock, goes to attend and leave. So, yeah, obviously, everybody's looking forward to that. And then, I also wanted to touch on the evening of the Arts event, which I know a lot of people in this probably know about already. It's at, on Thursday, June second, doors are open at four forty-five. Uh, it's going to be five dollars per, uh, five dollars a ticket for general admission, but it's free for students K through twelve, young children, and, uh, seniors. And, uh, what you, what you should expect, there's, uh, art show, cafe performances. There's also this dinner buffet with, uh, this meal from, uh, G M Riz. And, uh, tickets for those meals are twenty-five dollars, and they must be pre-ordered by May twelfth, uh, if you plan on getting there. And then there are also art awards, and there is a nice concert with the chorus members and the band members in, you know, the total. And I just wanted to touch on the fact that, you know, every single member of the Ram Music, Mi, Ram Music Department is extremely excited for this because, um, uh, similar to, like, you know, other events in the past, uh, we haven't been able to hold this, um, like, what we hold probably virtual ones, but like, not, uh, actually, you know, in person. So, uh, it's really exciting for the community to come, like, this is an opportunity for each member of the community, uh, to come and support this, uh, use of kid art stuff.
Awesome. I agree. Alright, uh, Chair report. Hope everybody had a safe, happy, uh, vacation, got back, and I know my son was, uh, less than thrilled to dive back in, uh, Monday morning, but, uh, I hope everybody gets back in. Again, I, I share all these concerns about whether or not we'll see any spikes, and, you know, we're going to continue to work through it, and I think as long as we continue to do the mitigation things and the, uh, to the extent that the tracing is necessary, I think it'll be fine. But, uh, yeah, I'll be interested to see how that works too. To answer your question, there are no real, um, testing requirements, you know, within the United States. My family, I went to Florida, came back, and there really wasn't any testing requirements. Other than that, I have nothing else to report. Superintendent?
Great, thank you. I'll pick up, um, where Lily left off in thanking, um, the district's perspective. Nadi DeRoy, Lily Senei, and Suzanne Salome, the three teachers that, um, chaperoned the trip to France and Morocco. As you can imagine, you know, we put our trips on hold for the last couple of years, and so to be the first trip out, um, was just a little nerve-wracking, to say the least. And they came through with shiny colors, and they know we're, um, very grateful for the students, and they've done a great job. You guys did represent Ram in the United States, and, uh, the fact that we had such a successful trip is really heartening, particularly since one of the agenda items to follow is going to be a trip to Spain next year. So hopefully that pushes the wheels a little bit for that. And to pick up where Rowan, um, kind of left off with the evening of the arts, this is, is always a special evening for Ram because it really highlights all of the talents within our, uh, community. And, you know, every month, we sit below the Ram Music Department, the best community for music education. And if I'm not mistaken, the music department is gerrily not including all the dates. But that's okay, because they have another date to add to it. We were just, um, listed as the, um, in the top first five percent of all school music programs for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, so we have some more dates to add along. So, congratulations to the music department. Erica is one of those members. Congratulations. Thank you for all you do. Certainly, the, one of the most momentous days in our lives is coming up, May third, which is the referendum for, um, the three, well, two of the town budgets, and the Ram operating and, um, capital budget. If any of you need any more flyers to distribute, just let me know, and I'll be happy to do whatever I can to get those in your hands so we can share those out. I want to get the word out, and I'm working with details and making sure that they have all that information, so hopefully as many people as possible get that information. We're at least did a nice overview of the budget and where it is, so I was pleased with that. We'll have, um, our next meeting will be a very brief meeting on May second, where we'll essentially need to recess into the referendum. So, we're just going to need to formally send the budget to referendum in May, so. And then I hope you call on each of you, congratulating the successful buddy of the referendum, so.
Alright, uh, item eight, consent agenda. So the approval of the minutes are shared. Is there a, uh, motion to approve the minutes from a previous meeting?
So, Sue, Sophie, excuse me, there is an issue with those.
Okay.
It indicates that I voted against the, um, the point five position for the child's, um...
Okay.
Yeah, that needs to be changed, but for, not against it. So I'm assuming there was somebody on the list that's probably listening correctly.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. We'll, we'll make sure that's correct where it gets posted. So then what do we need to do as far as approving this whole? We can approve it with the...
With the approval?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, uh, any other questions? Thank you, Carrie, for putting that up. Alright, subject to that, making that one specific change, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second.
Okay. So Sue, motion, Carrie, is that Mary? Great.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? Uh, any against? One dog? Alright. With the exception of the dog that, uh, that motion carries. Alright, personal communications, eight point two, stop.
So we have, um, essentially three letters to consider. One is a, um, letter, um, from Dwayne McGuffey notifying us of his intent to retire at the end of the current school year. And then, um, the other two from, um, Ashley Ward and Sarah Allen, tendering their reservations, um, as of the end of the school.
Do we, you can do a motion to...
We, we do, yeah. My recommendation would be that.
So is there a motion to approve the acceptance of the letter of retirement, the letter, letters of resignation as described? Alright, thank you. Uh, and a second for that, Gabe? Alright. Any discussion? Alright, hearing none, uh, we'll do it just a voice vote. All in favor? Eight opposed? Hearing none opposed, that motion carries. Nine point oh, old business, does not appear that we have anything for that particular item. So move on to item ten, new business. We have a student presentation requesting modification to the Columbus Day holiday listed on the Ram calendar.
So we have a, um, many clubs within the Ram community. One, the Student Activism Club, and the Student Activism Club has been, been active for years within the Ram community, um, and has done everything from, uh, promote various causes to bringing and organizing, um, kind of community-wide events immediately following department shootings. The Activism Club was, was incredibly instrumental in bringing this school together, and supporting each other and members within our community. So, uh, the Activism Club has a presentation they'd like to make to the board regarding the, um, the naming of one of the holidays that, um, is a, they offer Ram Columbus Day, and they have a proposal they'd like to present to the board.
Is that, would you like to just stand up where you are, if you'd like to use the, uh, the, uh... Phone in, please do so.
Mr. Nunes will have your presentation on the board.
Thank you so much for having us. Unfortunately, some of our club members couldn't make it to the jet lag from the France trip and other sports events. So we are the Ram Activism Club, and we are here to propose the change of Columbus Day to the new year. So, we are, of course, the Ram Activism Club, and we are working on making positive changes in our community and our school. In the past, we've worked on, um, helping the school learn about mental health, you know, bringing awareness and providing resources to students who really want to help in that mental health sector, and just want to improve the overall community of the school. We're also especially voting and bringing awareness to the students about who the candidates are so that they are aware of elections that are going on, big or small. We're also, uh, working on activism techniques. How can we be better activists in our community? How can we make positive change that we support? And how can we bring a voice to other groups who may not have that voice? This year, um, we helped create a bulletin board for our Hispanic heritage month, bringing light to some of those individuals and those communities that sometimes aren't seen in our communities as much. Uh, we've also promoted the Ram Rapture Nest, providing food and groceries for students who may need it in the community. So, Columbus Day origins. It started to, as a way to celebrate Italian immigrant heritage during the Yuletide age, a lot of the time, um, in the midst of stereotypes following those massive movements from Italy first. And so it was officially made a federal holiday in nineteen thirty-seven. Additionally, this, uh, creation of this holiday was supported by the Knights of Columbus because they wanted to have a Catholic hero, someone to look up to. And the Italian immigrants used this in the same way. They wanted to have a figure to look up to, like they belonged. So celebrations range from large-scale parades and events to non-observances, observances. Certain states generally recognize Columbus Day as an official holiday.
So it's a, it's acknowledged as a day of observance and recognition, not a holiday in a lot of places, which means that though it's named Columbus Day, it's not really celebrated or recognized. And it's a paid holiday for government employees rather than an actual celebration, which kind of goes along with that. Um, and why we believe this should change, we kind of think that the term is outdated, and as I said before, it isn't really why we celebrate it, though it's named Columbus Day, and not many people actually celebrate it by that, and just use it as a sort of holiday or day off. We would like to promote inclusivity going along with the mass-out change. We believe that we need to move away from those kind of stereotypes of Native Americans and promote, like, the positive image of the Native groups in the area. Yeah, as I was saying. And it would align with the curriculum of Ram. Uh, in a lot of classes, like in art, English, social studies, and more language, we learn about the Native populations, and this would just go along with that. For example, I know in my, uh, US history class, our first unit was all about Native populations and how they were complex and different. different and how they differed across the United States. Okay, so speaking of that mascot change, many major Native American organizations oppose the use of Native mascots and names. That's obviously why we changed ours. But I know that in that changing, a lot of people felt like we were kind of doing the opposite. We were kind of covering up, you know, by getting rid of the Saint John, covering up the Native heritage and history. And by reading Columbus Day to this, we will be able to kind of try to help bring that back because I know a lot of people were in opposition to that. Talking about changing the mascot, we saw Mr. Leslie said it's the right thing to do and we believe this is also the right thing to do. And to show kind of how other students from other districts also think like this, Ram was once blue-eyed by being opposing team the one time a student did dress up as the mascot decision.
So regarding other schools, a lot of the schools here you see on the list have made the change to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And a lot of them have also, rather than switch just Indigenous Peoples' Day, some of them have just regarded the day as a fall holiday or professional development day rather than switch to Indigenous Peoples' Day. But as you can see, a lot of them are in the area. So it shows the support that other communities have for this idea. So recently, Bridge Court also made a change in 2015. They switched to Indigenous Peoples' Day. A board member cited that students should be taught true history, not the falsehood that Columbus did to people. This board member also stated that Columbus didn't find anything, but there are Native people there. So this school hopes to promote advocacy and teaching history. We believe that changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day would better reinforce advocacy and education, which is an idea that we all support.
I'm sorry, I can't see that one point. But you made one member of the board member cited what? I can't see it.
Oh, I also stated that Columbus didn't find anything, but there are Native people there.
Okay.
Thank you so much for having us. You mean so much to us. We thank you for your concern and letting us present and change so much.
Yeah, we hope you use our slide and make a good informed decision about changing the name.
Okay. Thank you very much. You could just make yourselves available for potential questions here. I'm sorry, has somebody raised their hand online? Here.
Judy said she'll be here like that.
Oh, okay, that's it. All right. Okay, open up to the board. Questions? Comments? Concerns?
I think this is great. I'm impressed with it. I don't have to vote, but that's very admirable.
Anyone else? Any of our board members online have a comment?
I actually have a comment.
Go ahead, Carrie.
Okay, so first of all, I think they did a very nice job on their presentation. Whether or not I agree with it or not, I would like to say as somebody who is very knowledgeable about history and also has a large portion of Taino Indian heritage, I do believe that it's very hard to judge history looking through up the lens we have now. And from my perspective, if we try to change all our history, even though we may abhor what they did, we are doomed to repeat the same mistakes. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Okay. Any other members online with a comment?
Okay, so I think I, you know, first of all, thank you guys so much for coming here and presenting. I really appreciate the time and energy and effort that you put in and also your courage to come here and stand in front of everybody and deliver that presentation. You know, from the one singular board member's perspective on this, I think I do, I am very sensitive to the Native American plight and I, in a business format, I end up working with Native American tribes pretty regularly and it's very interesting to work and get things from their perspective. It's very different than I think what most people would think. I think the one thing to echo Carrie's statement is that as you look back on history, I do think it is, it is, it is complicated to make judgments when you fast forward, understanding the results of decisions and efforts that are made. I think one of the things I took some time to read about this a little bit because I appreciated the fact that you guys put some time and research and energy into it. I wanted to be able to be here and be informed and make decisions. I think one of the things that stuck out to me was that, well, there's no doubt that the results of some of the cross-Atlantic trips were very detrimental to indigenous populations, primarily through disease, but also through some elements of enslavement and war and lots of other unfortunate circumstances. I think those were results not necessarily intense. Probably could argue that. But I think the, one of the things that I think, being sensitive to Italian-Americans and Catholic Americans' perspective on this and just Americans in general, is that we also have to think about, you know, who was a guy like Columbus who took it upon himself and his team to venture out into the middle of an ocean that, you know, very few, if many, had really been willing to make that trip and be courageous from that perspective. And it makes me think of people like our astronauts today. I'm not sure if it's a 100% great comparison or not, but who knows what an astronaut might do if they landed on Mars and all of a sudden we found out there was an indigenous population and by some circumstance we passed off COVID completely unintentionally. But again, it's just, we're judging things from the rearview mirror rather than necessarily, you know, looking for. So I think those are kind of my thoughts. I think it's, I think there's definitely some benefits to what you're saying, but I also think there's some pitfalls to re-judging history in the rearview mirror. So with that being said, are there any motions on this that we need to entertain?
I'll make a motion that we make a change.
Okay. Any seconds for that? Hearing no second, we will not entertain that motion. Any other motions?
I'll make a motion. I motion that we split the debate. I would motion that even though you have a list of a number of schools up there that identify schools that have made that change to Indigenous Peoples' Day, there are many schools that have also decided to label that on their calendars as Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day. I think there's some merit to that in that it recognizes both the spirit of entrepreneurship and adventure and being brave enough to go out and try and prove things, but also is sensitive to the fact that there's some ramifications to that and some unfortunate results that were also visited by the indigenous people. So that being the case, my motion is that we change the name on the calendar to Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day. Is there a second for that motion?
Somebody online?
Sure.
Okay, Eric seconds that motion. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll go through a roll call vote. Lori? I don't think she's on. Mike?
Yes.
Dr. Benson Clark? Okay, hearing nothing. Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
No.
I, Mike, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with my computer. I'll abstain.
Okay. Jessica? I don't think she's pressing. Carrie?
No.
No? Okay. Gabe?
No.
Eric?
Yes.
Sue?
No.
Okay. And I would vote yes. That vote does not carry. All right. Any other motions on this subject? Thank you very much for your time, everybody. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
All right, that being the case, I think we read earlier, just get to
Yes, so this would be the discussion of possible action on the administration of the race survey. This is a agenda item that comes to the board every two years. This is a kind of part of our partnership with H M and H M is a recipient of many grants and one of the grants that does, provides significant support, both H M and Ram requires the administration of the survey. And quite frankly, the information gathered from the survey has been incredibly useful for us and H M has used it to spearhead a number of initiatives. And we're fortunate to have Tressa Giordano with us this evening, the executive chair of H M. So what, the reason why we're bringing it to the Ram Board this evening is that the Ram Board needs to approve any surveys from outside of the district that we're administering. So we will need a motion and approval to move forward with this. But Tressa can give us more detail on the significance of the survey and some of the background to it. So Tressa, thank you for joining us this evening.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you guys for the invitation. For board members that might be new, my name is Tressa Giordano. I started at H M in July of 2019, kind of right before COVID. So things have been an interesting path for sure, but I'm so fortunate to be working with Ram. And I feel that especially during these years of COVID, our collaboration and our relationship has definitely strengthened. And I know on behalf of my staff, we're all just really honored to be able to service and be there for the families of Ram. So as Scott mentioned, we do have the Drug Free Communities Grant. And with that 10-year grant, it's a requirement for every two years for us to do a survey. We use an evaluator, her name is Bonnie Wedlin Smith. We used her for years and she's been wonderful in helping us to create the survey, to take in all of the data. And then after the data is computed, she will actually come back to this board as well as our coalition to kind of break down the data points. We did, we were supposed to do this survey in the spring of 2019, but because of COVID, we held off until the fall of 2020. And we had a pretty good turnout of students responding despite being kind of in that high-grade school mode. We decided to run it in the spring to kind of get us back on the schedule that we were on originally, but also because we want to follow students that we questioned back in the fall of 2020, especially around some COVID and toxic stress questions that we had asked the current students two years ago. So we're hoping that, you know, with board approval, you know, we'll run these surveys to talk to administrators and it looks like this end of May, beginning of June, works with their schedule. These surveys, which are done, you know, through a link that I sent to the student, can be done in advisory. And so we work with administrators to find good times to have the students complete the survey, which should take more than 15 minutes. There's an instructional video that we put together some years back that the teachers can show so the students know exactly how to take the survey. So, you know, we do find over the years a lot of helpful information around substance use, sexual behaviors, we ask around the high school age students, not the middle school. As I mentioned, we did in the last survey, asked questions around COVID and how COVID has impacted mental health. We do ask questions around risk of suicide and thoughts of self-harm and also bullying and toxic stress. So we're really interested to get this information. And from there, once we have the data, we work together with administrators as well as our check coalition to kind of put a strategic plan together on how we are going to hopefully improve, you know, some of those issues that our middle and high school students are facing. And so over the years, and especially since I've started, I feel that, you know, H M has taken this information and worked with not only administrators, but teachers and really helping understand our students and understand how we can better help them. So, yeah, we are just hoping that tonight, you know, the board will approve putting it on the survey out to the students by and late spring.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
I just wanted to capture, how often does the survey perform?
It's every two years.
Excellent. Thank you.
Are there any new questions on this survey or are there repeats of questions from past?
They're pretty much repeats. There were some kind of crossovers with some of our COVID questions and toxic stress questions. And we work with our evaluator to kind of, kind of make sure that we don't have any repeating questions. The COVID questions obviously weren't new two years ago. Those were questions that we were asking prior. But we thought that it's important to repeat those questions in hopes that the impact that students were feeling with COVID, you know, back in 2020, have hopefully, you know, better results this time around.
And responses are anonymous?
Correct. They're all anonymous. Yep.
And you've got that locked down?
We have that locked down. Yep. And, you know, all.
You're 100% confident?
Correct. Yep. Parents will receive, you know, information. We, you know, our evaluator provides kind of templates that administrators will then have to hear. And so, you know, parents can ask their students not participate if that's something that they can't. I will say that traditionally, you know, Ram through the years has had a very high percentage of participation. And so that, you know, obviously helps H M and, you know, Ram get good information to move solutions forward. I just want to mention that, you know, based on these surveys, much of what H M does with the Ram community is impacted by, you know, these surveys. You know, many of you know that H M serves as, you know, our local de-service bureau, but by getting this information, we are able to work with Ram in programs such as Your Helpers, our Power of Words program has, you know, historically been a wonderful experience that our Ram students go through. Our PD training that we've been working with administrators on the past few years have been a direct result of some of, you know, the findings of this data. We've been really working with staff in the past two years around how we can help students who've been impacted by COVID, how we can help our educators kind of combat some of the challenges that they're seeing in classrooms of the direct impact of COVID. Due to some of the data that we found in the last survey around self-harm and lack of suicide, we were able to come in and work with Scott and administrators in making sure that all Ram staff, including parents and, you know, coaching staff have training in QPR, which is a suicide prevention training. You know, so again, a lot of this data, smart recovery, education around vaping, all of this comes together in helping our collaboration with families.
Okay. And Dr. Benson Clark, I think you have a question?
Yeah, I just, I just want to share, good evening, everyone, that I found this survey to be invaluable. I think Amy was on the line, Amy DiMaggio and Sue and some of us who have seen it for a long time. When I first was on the board years ago, it was the first time, for whatever reason, that that idea of bullying through exclusion really resonated with me. And I did a lot of research and Bobby and H M was very, very helpful. And I think not only is it great how you report back to us and work with our administration, our teachers, everyone, Tressa, but also then if families want to have their own conversations, not be kind of judging thing, but just as the conversation they can.
Absolutely.
Any other board members, questions, comments? Any other board members' questions or comments? Okay, that being the case, is there a motion to authorize the administration of the Erase Survey for R A M?
I make the motion not to administer the Erase Report, I think.
I'll second that, Sue Stolping.
Okay. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll go to a roll vote. Lori? Mike?
Yes.
Dr. Spencer Clark?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jessica? Carrie?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
I vote yes. That motion carries.
Great. Thank you so much. Tressa, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, everybody. So, yeah, once we get the results, we'll be back for, you know, because our presentation, which will most likely be early in the next four years. And thank you, thank you, everybody, so much for asking me to come tonight. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think that brings us back to 10.2, the overview of the Smart Pass application.
Correct. We, I'm sure you all are at least aware of Smart Pass. Just to maybe tell a little history. R A M was founded in 1957. And we had a book that was donated to the school. It was a signed copy of a poetry book, signed by Robert Cross. You'd think that would be worth something, right? Robert Cross being a poet that at least most everybody knows. Unfortunately, and I, I'm not naming names, but a librarian back in the late 50s had it rebound in school funding. So essentially, any value the book might have had kind of disappeared. But there was a note in the book asking that it be donated to a teacher upon their retirement. And the note was from 1957. And the note was written on one of these yellow utility passes, which we still use to this day. The utility pass that has remained unchanged for 64 years. And I only know that because I was born in 57 when this school opened up. We share the same issue. It's not to say that, you know, don't fix it if it ain't broke. But over the years, we've had a number of concerns with the traditional way of using paper passes. And in particular, when we're looking at an emergency situation, whether it be lockdowns or an evacuation from the building, a pass doesn't necessarily provide you with the information that you might need to have regarding the location of a student or a better way of knowing where students might be if they left through a classroom for a reason. So we were exploring some alternatives and decided to try the Smart Pass. And as I think many of you saw, there was a number of concerns with families. So we have put it, put the pilot on hold and thought, really, we should kind of go back to the drawing board and begin with a presentation to the board so that we could better help the board understand what Smart Pass is and why the switch from the traditional paper pass. And it's generated enough concern that I think we'll keep it on pause, at least until the May meeting, so that we can come back and answer any questions, make sure that, you know, any information that people may want, we can readily provide. So we're fortunate enough to have Eric, who not only is facilitating a meeting tonight, but is going to be presenting Smart Pass. We also have Dr. Briskel and Dr. Susie, who are here from each high school and middle school. So where are you going to answer your questions? Okay, it's different saying on this side of the table. So we're going to just go over Smart Pass. It gives us information on how the works out, operates. So it is some of the security features. And then I'll go into a quick demonstration of it on my computer. You want to stand behind me?
Eric, Eric, you want me to do it?
Yeah. So what is Smart Pass? So Smart Pass is essentially a digital hall pass system that literally limits our existing hall pass system in a digital form. It provides more benefits than a traditional hall pass system, such as timers on the passes, emergency reporting, and other features as well. And we'll get into some of those. So we're using, we started to use the system before the pilots put on hold, just in the middle school. The middle school is a much more controlled environment just because of the nature of the classes and how much there's no cafeteria in the middle and stuff like that. So it was a good place to kind of see its effectiveness involved out before, and now district-wide. Smart Pass was created approximately three years ago, quite suddenly by a group of high school students who wanted to help their teachers better manage the hall pass system at their school. It is now used by over 200,000 students and staff across the world with the past year. So as Mr. Leslie said, we have been using the same pass system since 1957. And we chose Smart Pass not only just to digitize under the game, not, if it works, not to fix it, but this will give us many benefits, such as the increase of safety and supervision of the students. We know where these students are in the building during an emergency. And I, we're not GPS tracking them, which I'll show you. But it will help us better manage that. Just the instant data recording is much better. If we were going to deal with our traditional paper pass system, it would probably take quite a while to cross our fence every few weeks. It's also going to help us limit vandalism and unsafe behavior in the bathrooms. It will decrease the amount of class time. And if I can quote a student, I'll highlight it. They said, "A lot of people realized I was at a class at home." And I was just after a while was using it. And it's definitely much more efficient and more informative process in our current years. So how does the Smart Pass system work? It works in a couple of different ways. And it could be, let's see, it could be worked in really two or three different ways. So students or staff can create a digital pass for the students. We have put in every classroom, bathroom, water fountain, the guidance office, media center, the main office, any place that a student would be able to go, the traditional pass was added into the Smart Pass system. Students can either create a pass, which is approved by the teacher, or the teacher can approve a pass for the student to go. Passing times for certain destinations have been predetermined. So for example, to go to the water fountain should take approximately three minutes or so. So we set the water fountain for three minutes, the bathroom is five minutes. Now, if the student needs additional time, we can always analyze that time and see, what is, do we have a lot of students who might need more than five minutes, and we can increase that time for that. And just like a traditional hall pass system, if they're about, if they run six or seven minutes in the bathroom, you're not going to kind of hound them for that. You can work with the students and see that that's okay. Most destinations are one-way passes, just because, for example, if they're going to the guidance office, we don't know how long they need to be in guidance for. So we didn't want to set the time limit for that. So guidance, the main office, the media center, those are all one-way passes. So they'll get a pass just to go there, so three-minute passing time, just what their classes will be. The bathroom, the water fountains, those are two-way passes because no one's in the bathroom inside the pass, so they just come back to the classroom. So bathrooms and water fountains are two-way passes. While everything else in the building is a one-way pass. So once they got to, for example, the media center, maybe they had to print a piece of paper to go. Whoever is the staff in the media center can write a pass to go back to their classroom. And like I said, if students use more than their allotted pass time, the pass will start to count upwards, and teachers will know how long the student was out of room for. So again, if they're only 10 or 15 seconds over, no one's going to get in trouble for 10 seconds. But if it becomes an issue, then they need to run the hall for maybe 10 minutes. And that's exactly the issue that we see using the system. Then they may be able to run to the top. So how does it compare to our current paper pass system? So like I said earlier, it literally is just an extension of that. So currently, students will sign out on a piece of paper in their classroom. They'll put their destination, the time in, the name, and both, their name, destination, and the time that they left. And when they come back, they'll put the time that they returned. Smart Pass literally works the same way, but it just keeps the record digital. So it's no different than if we took the spreadsheet that they would write in and just typed it all into a spreadsheet and added it that way. It just also has this nice, very nice interface on the back end that's easier to read and everything as well. And because of the way it's digitized, it allows us to analyze all that data extremely quickly. So for example, if there's an evacuation, which we'll see, we can pull everybody who's in the hallway at that second. They know that no matter what the seconds were, if you actually do that, the paper pass system would take quite a bit longer to do that. So I did a kind of comparison side by side. So for the Smart Pass system and for the paper pass, you'll see that we both have the time in, the student time in, and the time out. We can use their to and from destination. On a paper pass system, you can cross-reference multiple sign-in or sign-out sheets. So for example, if we needed to see where multiple students were, we'd have to pull those sheets from each classroom and analyze each one. On Smart Pass, it does it for you automatically. So there's no manual analyzation. It does it for you on the computer, essentially. In addition, the Smart Pass system is beneficial just because students, again, know how long they've been out of the room for. We know exactly immediately how long who is out of the room during lockdowns, evacuations, and other emergencies. And there's no basis in favor. So how does this help with safety? So Smart Pass allows us to access data that can be used for safety reasons. So for example, if there is an evacuation or lockdown at the school, administration is able to instantly have a report of any active student who is outside of that classroom and where they're headed. Again, there's no GPS monitoring, so we don't know where they are in the building. But if I know they're headed towards this room, then I know where they are. So if there is a real fire or something like that, you know who is sent, you know where to send emergency personnel. Again, like I said, you can send it to emergency responders. And that's critical because it allows you to do that in some instances. So how does it help with curbing vandalism? Again, because of the time limits on the passes, that's kind of really gives us a curve of vandalism. Students are more aware of how long they're actually in and out of the classroom for. And again, the goal is to keep students in the classroom, so that would be good. If they're going to the bathroom, for example, so maybe wandering around this way, they come directly back to their classroom because the pass has a timer on it. And does Smart Pass use GPS? It absolutely does not use GPS. That would be invasion of privacy, and I think that's still off. And that might be good. So Smart Pass only keeps track of which destinations in the school the students are headed to and how long they're out for. Again, same thing that we would do with the paper pass system, just in a digital form. So a student or a staff member can create a pass. Once the student returns, they stop the pass, or the teacher can stop the pass. No tracking information is ever collected because no tracking information is ever reported. Students don't carry, in the middle school at least, students don't have their phones on them. They're not carrying their phone looks to the bathroom. So there is no way to actually track them. And it's not, doesn't even exist in this program. So the tool is simply just a digital record and allows for real-time analysis of that data. So how does Smart Pass handle student data? And can they sell the data they collect? So back in 2018, the state of Connecticut passed Public Act 1689. It was talked about in 2016, and then it was officially included to service in 2018. And it prohibits student data to be sold, among other safeguards, such as towels or contractors to store the data and stuff like that. So what that law actually says is for any piece of, actually, any contractor, anybody who is outside of our district, who we do not employ, who wants to collect any information on students, they have to sign our data privacy addendum. And we've worked really hard over the past four or five years to kind of get that in place. And I'd say currently, we have over 150 different applications with different privacy addendums registered with different contractors. And that's actually one of the most that I can ever find on this roaming area. So we have a lot of contractors we've worked with to do this. And our privacy addendum is actually a little bit stricter than what the state requires in terms of reporting. So there's, for example, there's a data breach. They have to notify us within 48 hours. So there's different things that are actually stricter than what the state requires. And again, when we consider any of our tools, that's the first thing. So any teacher, any staff member comes to me, I kind of, I help them use the data privacy contracts. The first thing I look at is data privacy, and I look at the privacy policy. I look at any other districts in Connecticut have signed that state legislation with them. And then I reach out to them and see if they're willing to sign our data privacy policy. No one's allowed to even enter a student's name into a system without that being signed. So it's extremely strict. And if you actually look at any of the privacy policies that we have, we're all public online. And it goes into detail that once a, once your contractor, once you're, once you don't need them to collect student data anymore, they have to destroy it. So for example, since we're using Smart Pass in the middle school, if we did not implement that in high school, after the student moves from eighth grade to ninth grade, Smart Pass would have to destroy any of that data that is saved in the Smart Pass. If they, we ended up using it at the high school as well, that data would be destroyed after they graduate from high school. And it would no longer exist. And in the actual presentation, it has a link to the privacy addendum with Smart Pass and our data privacy page. So how will we present it? So what I have here is I have the administrator side of Smart Pass. Then I'll go into the teacher's side and actually issue a pass to the demo student. So it's not actually a real student. So on the administrator's side, you can see we were demoing with it earlier. There is no data today because, again, it's been inactive. So there have been no hall passes, no students have been reported. But this is basically the area in which an administrator can see all real-time data that updates as passes are being issued. So this is the current number of active passes, the number of reported students. So for example, if a student was found wandering the hall or something like that, that would be sent there. The average pass time, which, again, that's not necessarily, it would kind of tell you maybe where students are going and where they're headed. It has the pass usage, which was my demo pass earlier. And then the most frequent used destinations, which is interesting as well. So, yeah, it kind of helps curb vandalism because all of a sudden, you can see where these most frequently used destinations. Or maybe you can see where students just headed, maybe what might need more support. So that's kind of like the administrator's side. There's also this hall pass side. So any, any active passes would go here. And they would have the student's picture there. So you can see the things with our power school system, where they're headed, and how much time is left on the pass. Once that pass is expired, it goes into kind of like an archive. Over here, you can see all the rooms that we've added. So for the middle school specifically, we have the main office, the different bathrooms, the water fountains, guidance, the nurse's office, library, the different teams, cafeteria, I guess, the team room. So, and then it has just like all of our accounts and everything in there. On the teacher's side, which I'll show you, which will be my account. When a teacher logs into the system, this is what they're going to see. So they have three tabs at the top. They can, on their home tab, they can either create a pass for now or the future, which is beneficial, especially in the middle school, for that period when maybe a student needs to go visit a teacher to make a quiz or something like that. They can schedule a pass in the future. And a student can actually schedule the pass and say, hey, is this a good time to make up a quiz? I'm going to schedule a pass. The teacher will get a notification. They can either accept that pass or deny the pass, but maybe they need more time for the quiz. Maybe that's not a good time. Or they can say, yeah, you can come look up the quiz, they're on time, and they accept the pass. And that will go into the student's future passes that they'll use. We can also use that for, which I, Smart Pass, I've talked to them. They're actually very, very good about adding features. And they're talking about adding reoccurring passes and stuff like that. So if a student maybe needs to go to guidance or something, they can have that as a reoccurring pass. There's also, again, like I said before, the hall monitor tab. That has all the active passes, but obviously right now there are none. And then it has their room right now, which my room in the middle school would be the course room. And the people room, so that'd be my room, but specific to my account. So if I wanted to create a pass for a student, I'm going to go click now. And then I'm going to search for a student. So my demo student is ranny.ram, so I'm going to type ranny. And that's their account. And now I've selected the student, I'm going to write the password. On the student's side, they wouldn't have to obviously find themselves because it's in their account. So they would just skip that and say, So they would just skip that and say where they need to go for their destination. So I'm gonna click next. Um, right now, all the teachers have their rooms favorited in there. So for example, I said my room is the chorus room and the keyboard room. So if I want to send them, um, this is from where they're going, so if I have them, for example, in my seventh grade musical class, I'm going to send them from the chorus room, so I'll click that. And then say maybe they need to go to the main office, so I'm gonna click the main office. And now, again, I can adjust the time for the student, if the student's creating a pass, they can also adjust the time. So this is a one-way pass, I'm gonna say the student can have a full three minutes to get there. And I'm gonna send this pass to that student. And you'll see that that's an active pass now and it's counting down from the improvement in mark, because that's how much you gave them. On the hall monitor side, you'll see that that's an active pass. Okay, so that has now gone to the active pass side. And then if I jump back to the administrator's side, you'll see that that's an active pass right now as well. So again, it's all real-time data that's happening that we can get. So if there was an evac, if there was an evacuation, I could just jump in here, see the number of active passes and see where those students are headed. So that's the real-time data that we're getting. Whereas if we did it with a paper pass system, you would know, you would know hours later. Um, I also have the student account open right now. So right now, this is what the pass would look like on their Chromebook. Um, and it, you'll see that they have two minutes and twelve seconds left. They're going to the chorus room, or they went from the chorus room to the main office, so I'm actually gonna enlarge that pass. You can see that I haven't, they can also see that they haven't used any passes today, this week or this month. So we'll run, remind them and see how many passes they used. There's no limit to how many they can have, it just kind of helps them. And say they get to the main office on time, it took them a minute and ten seconds or so, they can click in pass. And now that pass goes into their expired um passes, which they can remove, so it's not kind of going into their, the page of their screen. And they can also, on the student's side, they get future passes as well. Um, that's pretty much it. Again, it's an extension of kind of what we use.
Open up to the board of questions?
Oh, there. So the student, they need to carry their phone with them.
Good question. So when considering a digital pass system, um, you want to send it was not, it was gonna be equitable if it was not, especially in the middle school, students aren't allowed to have their phones out. We don't really want students carrying their phone books in the bathroom or anything like that. Um, so we want to send it with work for everything. So in here, you don't need, they don't need to carry any devices, it just goes into this database essentially. Um, just same thing if they were writing it down. But because there's a hall monitor feature, um, the, the different hall monitors at the middle school or the staff members can pull that up on their device or on a tablet, um, you can give them tablets or something like that. And they can see all the current active passes that are active. Same way a normal paper pass would work, so if you're walking by me and I assign you a pass and then I question where you're going, I can see where you're going in here. You just don't have to show me this on paper.
So how, how does it, uh, how do you end it? So, you know, you've got so much time. So, so you know that someone is out there just in doubt.
Yeah, good, so I see what you mean, because if they don't have a device, how do they end the pass? So like, if they're going to the main office, for example, um, anybody, any staff member in the main office can log in and they can end it at the student's pass. Um, same thing if they're in the media center. If it's the bathroom or the water fountain, those are two-way passes, so the student can actually start the pass on their computer, on their Chromebook, when they get back to the room, they're gonna end the pass on their own.
With that said, uh, they don't carry anything, so they have to rely on a watch to know their time?
Um, no, I, I s- that's a good question. So I think um, in terms of their time, they just, if they're not carrying a watch, they could um, if they find, you.
What, well, most students don't carry watches or don't have watches or timekeepers. Five minutes is a set timer given all passes. Paper or digital doesn't matter. We trust that kids will go to the bathroom and come back. Something, something impedes them or something a teacher may ask them a question and they get back. So I guess the answer is they don't have to keep a watch on them. It's not, it's not clock critical, so to speak.
Well, what are the repercussions if they go a minute past their turn?
Uh, so typically, even now, our staff, if a student is taking too long, let's say they go to the bathroom or go to the water fountain, when they come back, they'll, they may have seen that they're running over time or even with paper pass, that they've signed out of the classroom. If they're a minute or two over, the teacher may just walk over and say, is everything okay? It's, it.
Okay.
It's nothing, it's not changing what we do in terms of a paper versus digital, it's just a digital assigned pass.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead, Mike.
Is there an administration main area? We might have already talked about this, but in the case of an emergency, uh, is it up to each of the individual teachers to, to find out exactly and report in where their students are located or where, you know, who's got passes? Or is there an administrative uh, portal?
Yeah, um, yeah, so this would be the administrative portal and it shows the um, number of active passes. And if that was active, you can see where those students are headed. The administrator or, or any staff member could actually click on the hall monitor view and see there's a student active. So for example, if there's an evacuation, they happen to have that tab open, the hall pass tab, smart pass tab. They can see, oh, maybe the student is coming by my room, they should just check on that and bring them outside for the evacuation. So both, there is kind of both that administrator view here and then the, the hall monitor view as well.
All right, well, one other follow-up. In the case where the, where the student comes back to the classroom and you forget to cancel the pass, even time accumulates. Is that student going to accumulate uh, time on a pass that is then going to be spoken to about? How do we control that? I think that would be a concern that some parents are going to have.
So it was interesting, because on the, on the one day that we did kind of attempt to enroll it out, um, um, I was looking, actually, at, at the end of the day, I was looking and there was um, a hundred and fifty-eight passes active, which I thought was amazing. Um, there was that many, so that just kind of goes to show. But I think as well, there were a few that kind of were rolling up in time and I was looking at them and I was like, huh, there's a rolling up in time and they haven't, and they haven't stopped. I mean, and I, I think what happened was just um, the student or the um, staff member just forgot to end that pass. And I think that would go obviously into the archive section. Um, and if we're looking at that constantly, we see that that's fifteen minutes, maybe we pull the student aside and talk some. But if it's a kind of a one, out of the blue um, circumstance where it's a ten, then we would just kind of see that maybe they just forgot to end the pass. Um, um, and just kind of, but if, again, if they have it multiple times, then that data would kind of show something different.
Yeah, the data will teach you how, how to handle it.
Uh, somebody online with questions, one of the board members? Who's it?
I.
Who's it, Eric?
Here.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, her.
So if it's basically the same thing you're doing and the children don't have to carry a phone with them or anything like that, obviously it's not, uh, we know the GPS isn't there. My question is, from a history and a record-keeping perspective, is there a log currently with the paper system that is kept in the office in, as a history of who had passes when? Or do they just get tossed to the church?
So, so teachers, each teacher has a sign-out, sign-in sheet to keep track of who, to log the passes that are used there today. And if something does happen or we, we need to find a student or we suspect something, we have to go to each log, look it up. Uh, one year, we did create a spreadsheet for one team, based on the fact that there were some issues happening with one of the bathrooms. And we tried to keep track of who went in and went out. It is very time-laborious to do, to enter, to type in each name into a spreadsheet. But we did track that way, we can track that way. This really does just simplify that process.
Right, I guess I was asking, are the paper, are the paper logs kept or are they discarded?
Identity or we throw them out.
Oh, you keep them going, okay.
Yeah.
That's all I, thank you.
And same thing with this system, as we could, we could destroy that after, whatever we want to. Smart pass has to keep them, smart pass can keep them until it's, you know, but we can destroy them at any point, because we own. We, as I talked about that data privacy before, in that data privacy addendum states that we own any piece of data. Now, the contractor does not own that, so we have complete control over how, um, we can delete it at any point. So if we want to delete it quarterly, we could, if we want to delete it yearly, we could.
Okay, 'cause what I'm gathering from a lot of the things I've seen and heard from parents is those surveillance factor have, um, that's why I was asking them a question, so thank you.
Lost, Eric?
So, go ahead, Eric. Um, so you mentioned that it um, you can keep track of how many times students use the restroom. Can you, is there a way that it can tell these three students from three different classrooms? Say they all use the restroom at one fifteen every afternoon. Is there a way that you can track that?
It can't, if, if, we can put in um, sorted by room, so if there's like a bathroom that's being used, let's say um, say, three and two bathroom in the middle school. We can pick a time and run the report of who's in that bathroom at that time. But you um, can't like choose students and see where they, if the three students and see where they're at, you have to run it by the room.
Okay, I'm just coming from the, the perspective that if there's a making issue potentially going on, if we can, I don't, I hate the word track, but you know.
Yeah.
Essentially identify three students or however many students consistently meeting at the same place at the same time and forget.
Yeah, you can kind of get that from both, from a different data point. So there was that most frequently used room.
Okay.
Section, so that would kind of increase, so you can kind of look into those insights. And then you can also look into, um, you can, if you know that maybe this bathroom is a making issue, you can pull, actually you can pull it from any set of time, like between one and fifteen, or you can pull it from the entire school area and between the old one and report who's in that bathroom.
Oh, okay.
All right. Sir, did, did somebody else sign in online, any other board members with a question? No. Any other board members with questions?
Can, I can just, Mike, um, you asked about the evacuation and the passes. Just to give you a sense of how that happens now and how different this is. So when we evacuate the building right now, every classroom has a direction that they go and they leave the room and they have a, a stairway or an exit door that they leave. And then they have a gathering area that they go to. So because we're using a paper system, at that point, at no time during that point do we know, those of us who are, you know, ultimately responsible, well, we're all responsible for the safety of our kids, but those who are immediately, you know, responsible for the safety of our kids, who may be out and about and not with their classroom. So the current method of doing that is that once the students have, have, and the classes have left the building, we have runners and they go to each of the classes and pick up a piece of paper that lists who's there and who's not there. And then they collect X number of pieces of paper, maybe from six classes. And then they have to run that to, for the high school, they run it to the flagpole. And we have a, our attendance secretary who is checking off that each of the teacher's attendance slips have been found. So you're talking a process just to collect those slips that might take half an hour. And then to actually get into the weeds to see who may or may not be with that classroom, who might have been out of classroom at that time. Um, it would probably take about a few hours to do that. Whereas with a smart pass, you, the administrative page, you can simply open up and you know exactly who wasn't with their class and who wasn't accounted for on that attendance list. So you could very quickly determine who might be missing and who may not, you know, for safety purposes. So it, it streamlines some of those things that we have a great deal of process in place for, but still is very cumbersome and takes a long time. You know, fortunately, I'm speaking the fire drills of we were fortunate not to have an actual evacuation. But something like this would be invaluable, allowing us to very quickly know where everybody is and so that we can make sure that everyone's evacuated from the building and all that stuff. Also, in a lockdown situation, it would allow us to um, determine, you know, who may not be in the classroom, who might have been out in the hallway and therefore um, found shelter in a bathroom or a room on the classroom.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I, I, for a short time, very briefly, I, I worked as a substitute teacher at an elementary school. And uh, uh, you were assigned to a different classroom every day. So it wasn't like you get to know who your kids were or anything like that. It was a project even to take attendance, okay? And of the many things I didn't like about that job, the one that made me stop doing it was I asked myself, if there was an emergency, the place was on fire, if there was a gun in the school, would I know where my kids were? And the answer was, you know. And so if, an electronic system could help a little bit, you know, because, because the comings and goings, I mean, there's, there, there are kids who move from the classroom through special instructions. There are kids that come in and leave because of special instructions. There's kids going in and out for a variety of things. You don't know them personally, you don't recognize them, seeing them. It, it's, it should be a very, very difficult task to, you know, start, for starters, who your kids were and then would you know where they were. The answer was no, and that's, that was the biggest contributing factor within some of those jobs.
I think, you know, I know some of the concerns coming from, from parents were the issue of tracking, you know, tracking kids. And we're not, we don't have the tracking, because as we said, they don't have the device for them, so we're, we're not able to do that. But, but then the, the, on the flip side, it's our responsibility to know where every one of our kids is during every second of the day while they're here at school. Certainly when the school bell rings at two-ten, um, that's not the case anymore. But certainly during the school day, the parent calls up at any moment in the day and asks, where's my kid? You better know exactly where that child is, otherwise, regardless of whether they're a seventh grader or a senior, you know, two days from graduation, um, that parent expects us to know exactly where that child is. And this, again, it doesn't track them, so I can say, well, I'm looking at my phone and I can see that they're walking down X hallway. No, it doesn't do that, but it allows us, if we call into the classroom and the teacher says, well, they're not there, it allows us to, with the passes, and say, oh, well, they went on a pass two periods ago to guidance and they're with their counselor. It's PDA's, kind of something, you'll understand where students go.
Eric, present a way of following.
There's a member from the public that I'm, correct.
Um, so, uh, like, any other board member questions? Yes, which?
Uh, just another quick one, just an example. Um, so say a student going from their classroom to the library and the school goes into a lockdown and I run into, say, the guidance office. Is it because my teacher assigned me to the library, is only the library allowed to sign me back in? Or could, could a, a guy's counselor accept my pass?
Yeah, any, any staff member can approve.
Okay.
Yeah, any staff member can sign in or.
Okay.
End the pass.
Okay.
And then we'll say, on like a side note, I've been in contact with smart pass for other features and some of the teachers have um, asked about it. It wasn't a very receptive um, um, additive thing and they've been having a roadmap of, yeah, we have this future plan and I'll say it's very aimed towards public schools. It's, it's, would have been something that we would, we would look for.
I have a couple of questions. So what's the, what does this system cost us?
Um, they gave us a deal for the, for the first year and a half, I wanna say it's.
Twelve, twelve hundred?
It was a little less, I think it was eight hundred dollars for a year and a half.
And that's for the high school and then the middle school?
No, just no.
That's for the middle school, what about the high school?
Um, the high school was gonna be a separate twelve hundred dollars, so about two thousand dollars for a year and a half.
Okay, one question that I, I've had, um, or I guess one item that I've seen raised from some uh, parents sending me uh, questions and concerns. What does a profile look for a student? Like, so if you're entering a student into this system, what, what is the student profile, what does that consist of?
Um, so it syncs with our Google education account, so it just has their name, their email and their photo. There's no other, no, no.
No age, no birthday, no, no.
Just name, email.
When you say it syncs, is it, is it something that you're manually adding based on a list from your, like, you sharing something over to it or is it?
So it comes from Google, so basically, essentially, if like a new student enrolls in the school, their account would be created at midnight the day they get entered into school. So it just keeps us, so basically like, for example, if a student withdrew from my, let's say, seventh grader withdrew. So it just keeps us, so basically, like, for example, if a student withdrew from RAM, let's say, seventh grader withdrew, their data would be, once they enroll with Google, they're cocked from the smart pass.
Okay, so, so to be clear then, there's no real separate profile, they are entered in, they they essentially get a profile in Google as part of being a random student. And that same set of three pieces of information is, because it's a Google problem, what you're saying?
Well, the smart pass isn't Google, but the the information is synced over.
Okay.
But again, Google also has that privacy then with us as well.
So you talked about how you're, we plan to use it, uh, if if we move forward on it. What is there, are there functionality or elements um or modules that that are eligible within the system, but you you're not using them?
So there is the um, there's an encounter convention.
Which gets back to what Joe was asking about, right?
That is a separate module that we have turned off, but it's not really, it's part of the system, but it's um, sounds like you kind of add on. But essentially, that would be if there's, for example, two students who may be trying to be in the bathroom at the same time just because of a need or some area reason. If one of those students has a pass, it will allow the other students to be issued a pass until that was sort of turned. There is a override feature that's coming within the next few months, this smart pass. So like, for example, you wouldn't want your student to go to the nurse and be issued a pass because um it wasn't mine, so you would obviously want to override that so they can go to the nurse.
Okay. When you say you're not, that that's, that is, when you say you're not using that, that that's used in, or wherever the administrator is for RAM, not turning that system on. But it is available and part of our our, whatever our cost structure is?
Yeah, it comes with, it comes with the programs, you can't not pay for it.
I get it.
But yeah, we um opted out to turn it on, so it is completely turned off. And in order to turn it on, you would actually have to, like, you need to see it and all that.
Okay, what what other, are there any other elements or modules that you're not using that are, that are currently available within the system?
Those are, that's what I mean. The smart pass offers that.
Um, okay. Uh, so I'll just throw out a couple, a couple notes to to Scott, going in the beginning of this discussion. Um, based on the concerns that were raised from the community, uh, and the idea that the necessity to to communicate, you know, the system and have this presentation. Feel some questions, um, talk about just postponing any implementation of this, any future, at a, at a minimum until the next school year. Um, one of the things that I did ask Scott to do was to inquire through um our legal counsel. If there's any um risk or concerns from that perspective that we need to be aware of. Uh, if I'm being honest, there are some parents that have raised the specter of potentially uh uh legal consequences if if we move forward with this. The last thing, so I want to make sure we're clear that we understand what those circumstances are from board perspective, so we can make an informed decision. Um, and then I think the only other thing I would just say is that um, I think I, it was great to see that. But I think if there's any other board members that would want to actually maybe get in front of that and just kind of walk through, I couldn't really see it very well. So I think that's probably something that we could probably arrange if necessary, so that board members can also respond to constituents if they have questions after having had this presentation. Uh, Dr. Vincent Clark, I think I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you.
Um, so I have, I guess, one question with a follow up. Um, having worked with high school students and at some larger high schools, we have had, say, for instance, two high schools. Schoolers where there's a safety plan, they are not supposed to cross paths for various reasons. So I guess my thought is, this could be useful. How however, if we ever were going to do that or um have group students, I I think that, I mean, I don't know what's legal. But I think having, telling parents, whether it's through a P P T or something, is is advisable. And maybe you could get um how it's being used in the state and and what is legal for next meeting.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Um, yeah. Are there any other questions at this time? Somebody, who's that, is that a board member or?
Yeah.
What was it?
Here.
I'm sorry, Carrie, go ahead.
No, just a real quick comment, I'm just wondering, um, you know, I think this presentation was a bit annoying me perhaps. And I, and I understand, you know, I have a child going up next year. But maybe it's, is it feasible to do this presentation to ease the community at some point?
Yep, absolutely. I think we can also, we could, we could do a couple things. We do a a light presentation, but we could also do kind of a video walkthrough of this presentation. So that would be available at any time and and we could, you know, blast it out to everybody, so it would be easily accessible to everybody. Yeah, and absolutely, and I think, Carrie, I think we wanted to to deliver it to 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 you guys first. And then um look at how we can investigate it out to to our families, so that they can see it as well.
Well, thank you.
I think, if there's no other, other concerns or questions, I think the only other comment that I would make is that I would implore, you know, uh, the administration as a whole, and that includes the board. I I think that, I think we have to be sensitive to the fact that there are sensitivities around certain subjects. And I think, you know, in this day and age, there's a lot of sensitivity around data collection, people in general, and certainly about our children. And I think what we probably need to do going forward is to recognize that sensitivity and maybe be a little bit, while I don't want to stifle uh progress. For new systems and new opportunities to do things differently and better. I think we also have to um be super proactive about the communication part of that, um, that planning. And um and communicate those things well in advance and be a little bit more aggressive about how we include parents in that. Uh, so that we probably would, you know, maybe not have had quite as many questions and concerns if we were a little bit more aggressive as a group on that kind of thing. So just going forward, I think that's probably a best practice that I would advise. Any other concerns?
Actually, I have one more question. Are parents able, so my stepson's gonna be in seventh grade next year. Would I be able to, as a parent, view his hall passes? So I can see and question him, well, why are you going to the restroom during this certain class every day? Or is it something the teacher would have to tell the parent?
You, there's no current portal that I support, like, just um, right as a future center, right then, in the smart pass. But um, there's no portal, so you actually have to ask um their teacher.
Okay.
So then I believe a teacher, you have that one, the administrator was the one that reported that.
Okay.
I think it's interesting because if from the perspective of a parent, if I can see more of what it is that collecting and what's going on, then maybe I feel less concerned about it.
There are other programs that that definitely do, like, we don't have it here, but there are other technology programs that allow um parental access.
Yeah.
It's what the students are searching.
The the uh, what's it, the, what's the online, uh, we have power, the power school thing is, if you use it, it's the parent's best friend. Uh, Carrie, is that you again?
Yeah, sorry, um, just real quick, uh, piggybacking on them. So not, you know, I know for a fact that my son is great, not everybody has phones. So is this gonna be on everybody's Chromebook where the parents can view it on their child's Chromebook?
Yeah, actually, yes, that's another good point is, um, it's, it's just a web portal, so they, the student came home with their Chromebook, they they log in. And you can see all their passes, so that would work that way as well.
Thank you.
Okay, is there no other questions and or, I'm sorry, oh, you, uh, Dr. Vincent Clark, go ahead.
I I have my hand up, I missed the first part. Um, what, did you say parents might be able to see how many fun children use um passes in school?
Um, so there's no current parent portal to have a parent login to see that, but they could, um, if, when the student brings their Chromebook home, they could um sign in. And they can see all their past um hall passes, or um a staff member should be able to see um that data, be able to.
So, so, and this is just another thought, I mean, we're all different, y'all have our different privacy and everything. I literally turned Power School off, and I didn't, I didn't listen to it or watch it or use it. Because I decided that learning was the most important thing for my children, they were taking the highest level classes possible. And I saw a very good um parody done of Power School at one of the K conventions. And it's, it's just something to think about, you know, sometimes we teach children, if you're really stressed, take a break. And adults do this to go get a drink or something. I mean, I I don't know, it scares me a little, um, thank God, I don't have children in high school. But I would not want to know every time they went to the bathroom or or to get a drink. I appreciate others, others might, but I think sometimes there are unintended consequences. Maybe when we're looking at any legality, like I said, with students from safety plans, we could hear if there's any, any research on on that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments or concerns on this topic from the board? Any motions that we need to entertain? All right. Uh, I think we can move on to ten point three, requests for overnight trips.
So um, this has been a missing piece of our agendas for the last couple of years, obviously, since we we have not been approving any overnight trips. Lily mentioned, and I mentioned a little bit, the trip to France, that was a trip that was planned in two thousand eighteen. Was supposed to run in two thousand twenty, and it was put off because of COVID. The students that graduated in the meantime, twenty and twenty-one, got full refunds. But now that we're back and the world is open again, um, you know, no more free refunds, and so obviously we had to run the trip. Um, but I'm, I'm pleased to um be at that point where we once again, um, we'd like to consider offering overnight trips. And the Board of Education, as a matter of course, doesn't approve field trips, those are done at the building level. However, any overnight trip, the Board of Ed needs to approve. And um, because we haven't done any of these in my tenure, I I I think it's typically part of the incentive. But I wanted to put it into new business because we really are reopening the door back into the world for our students. So we have two requests for overnight trips. One is a trip tentatively scheduled for um April break in two thousand twenty-three, and this would be a trip to um to Spain. This is a longstanding sister school program that RAM has been engaged with. Where a school from Cordoba brings their students to RAM in the fall. And they uh, they're housed in families, RAM families, and they stay with us for a couple, for a week or so. And then in April, the students who house the Spaniards are housed um when they go to Madrid and Cordoba for those trips. So um, Lord David Blay has a request to um reactivate the Spain sister school program. For two thousand twenty, um, it would be the date tentatively, April tenth to April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. Would involve approximately twenty-four students, and they'd be traveling to primarily Madrid and Cordoba, Spain, um, with various other cities, day trips. The other um overnight field trip is a longstanding trip to Disney with our, um, sponsored by our music boosters. This is for the band chorus, and this provides students with a firsthand experience at a professional performance venue. And they work with world-class conductors and arrangers. And this is involving um as many as a hundred students, and they would be flying down to Orlando. This would involve all of our performing ensembles, concert choir, chamber singers on Portland, ensemble, symphonic band, jazz band, percussion ensemble. Um, I can speak from a personal note of how valuable this trip is, having two sons that played the triangle in the Portland High School. Um, but it was those two or three clinks of the triangle that got, that got them on the Disney trip, so it was well worth it for them. Um, if anyone's wondering, no one majored in triangle, and they don't play the triangle anymore, but they still are really fond of the Disney trip. So they are um requesting March twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-three. And I would imagine these are the first of, we'll see some more requests for overnight trips. These are, these are two um trips that have been running consistently over the years, the trips to smart. So I would need a motion to approve uh the overnight field trips.
I'll just, I'll just throw that this out, my daughter went on a Spain trip twice, she's still in close contact, she stayed with the same family twice. Still, to this day, she's twenty, gonna be twenty-four here, she's still in very close contact with that family, they still, she comes to visit here, my daughter goes to visit over there. Uh, it was an exceptional program, and I would struggle around with it. Any uh questions or comments?
Yep.
No, I just wanted to add a few comments. So number one, I also did in freshman year, I did not go on trips to Spain, but I did host this X J C as part of that program, and it was a blast. And it would be truly like, as somebody who's been involved with, you know, the Spanish for the past quite a few years now. Um, I feel like it's an opportunity that each kid who takes Spanish should like, shouldn't have. And I I know, obviously, in the past years, we haven't been able to do that, but I feel like now it would be a great opportunity for them to like explore more, you know, their culture and stuff like that. And um, yeah, being able to have somebody um from Cordoba, Spain, in their home, to interact with and like, you know, make a new friend, if he speaks a new language, is a great opportunity. And um, regarding the Disney, one thing, I think that as somebody who also is from a, you know, I do, I'm in percussion ensemble. I think that's a, like, you know, a fantastic opportunity as well. And I think I speak for the majority of your music department. And um, you know, everybody would say it would be, it would be, it would be a blessing to be able to go and be that next year. So that's just what I add to this.
Thank you.
Who, who was just speaking, please?
That was Roland, our student representative.
Excellent, thank you.
Uh, any other board members, comments or questions? All right, that being the case, uh, is, would somebody um make a motion to uh approve the uh world language department's travel to Spain? Uh, and the music department Disney trip, uh, overnight trips? Okay. Eric?
Second.
Was that Sue?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I feel like we can do a voice vote here, uh, all in favor? Five?
Our.
Any opposed? Not opposed, that motion carries. All right, uh, let's move on to ten point four, discussion in power school action, oh, we already did it on the erase, sorry. Uh, ten point five, first reading of policies.
So these were presented to the policy subcommittee. We had three policies, um, we discussed, um, update, making updates to the eligibility for participation in co-curricular activities. Um, the school lunch charging policy and credit for online courses. Take a look at the, and and the copies that that the board has, um, the red strikeouts would remove current language. And the blue underlying would be the additional language. For the eligibility for participation in co-curricular activities, Dan Trados here, our athletic director. And he can certainly um answer any questions and speak to this policy. This is a um, an update to our eligibility for participation in co-curricular activities. Which currently requires that students achieve a average of C minus or better, so seven, so it takes to a seventy average. Um, and have no Fs in order to be eligible. This would be at the end of a um quarter, in order to be eligible for the participation in the next athletic season. Um, and obviously, the the policy is there to encourage students' interest in athletics. To um, to do, focus at least adequately enough on their academics. So that they are successful in their classes if they'd like to participate in athletics. Dan has done a number of, um, has taken a close look at this and found that um, it it actually does prevent a number of students. Some of our most needy students from participating in athletics. And is proposing a modification to the policy um that would allow students, would still. And is proposing a modification to the policy, um, that would allow students, would still require the C minus average, but it allows students to, um, have one F and still participate, um, in athletics. And Dan, do you wanna expand on that a little bit in terms of, um, kind of your reasoning since you work most closely in athletics?
Yeah, sure. I'm gonna come up here. Yeah, as, uh, Mr. Leslie alluded to, um, it it seems that it's our more needy students, uh, where there's a population of our more needy students who are student athletes, who were being affected by, um, are no F policy in the athletic policy. You know, it it was, I'd say there's, there's eleven or twelve each athletic season, eleven or twelve placeful students, student athletes who fall into that ineligible category. You know, I went back and looked when I did this for second quarter, which established our third quarter eligibility. Eight of the twelve students, um, or eight of the twelve student athletes who fell into that ineligible area, happened to be students that, um, were either higher needs, um, you know, one parent at home, a minority student, um, just kind of fell into those categories of not our traditional students. And when I looked at that, um, you know, obviously I do wanna support those those new year students without also sacrificing the integrity of what the other policy was meant to, um, with what the current policy is meant to do, which is older, it's higher standards. And in, you know, discussing with Mr. Leslie, discussing with Dr. Briscoe, you know, I I I don't wanna speak for them, but we discussed, and I firmly believe that the vast majority of our student athletes are still going to, um, you know, they're still gonna be striving to be high-performing students. So, so I don't look at this as something that's necessarily lowering the standard for everyone, but I look at it as supporting, um, those higher needs students. And and I believe this is, unless it got edited out, which I already did, but, um, allowing those students one F, one stipulation to that was that that one F couldn't be lower than a fifty. So really it it wouldn't allow for a student who knows they're, they're going to fail their English class to say, you know, what the heck with it, I'm just gonna bomb this class for the rest of the quarter. I have focus on my other classes and make sure I'm, to make sure I'm eligible. They're still gonna have to put a concerted effort, um, into those, you know, into that course, uh, which they might just, you know, for various reasons, struggle to sort of grasp the knowledge. And and really, so that's, that's the reasoning behind it. I think I hit on everything in there, um, but obviously if anyone has any questions.
It also should point out that this is still more stringent than the CIAC eligibility requirement. So we we still hold a more stringent, even if this change is approved, um, our policy will still be more stringent.
And to to follow up on that, uh, from kind of a a policy standpoint, um, because the CIAC does say, you know, our eligibility standard is the golden standard. So, um, if we had a student who, let's say, went through a traumatic experience, um, and they were all of a sudden ineligible, we as a school administration have the ability to discuss that student as a, you know, as a, on a case-to-case basis and say, okay, we're gonna grant their eligibility because they were facing this circumstance. If they didn't meet the CIAC qualification, we would not have that ability. We would have to say, you know, no matter what the circumstances are, you're not allowed to participate because you don't meet the CIAC standard. So the reason I say that is from a sort of a policy standpoint and and, you know, practical practice. You know, if if we make an exception for one student, um, you know, for whatever the circumstance may be, you know, I I think we're kind of in a time and age where kids talk and, you know, everyone on their team is gonna know. So if there were two kids on the, the boys lacrosse team that were ineligible and one got an exception granted and the other didn't, you know, I I think from a policy standpoint, we're also sort of looking into, um, you know, a potential minor. And and to be honest, that's really has nothing to do with why I, you know, sort of drafted this proposal. It really was to to support these students with a potential higher needs, but I think it was kind of an unintended circumstance that, um, ended up being discussed at the administrative level.
Do you board questions or comments?
I believe I was present at a meeting some years ago, sitting over there, where, um, where a comment was made that, um, athletics were a inducement for borderline students to do that. Because they knew that if they didn't achieve a certain academic level, they wouldn't be able to play. And so that person was advocating, um, a high standard, a high academic standard, so that that borderline student was maybe not selected for the school, but very interested in athletics, would work harder, improve their academics so that they could remain eligible. So that's, that's sort of the opposite argument to what's being presented here. I guess personally, I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea that someone can be failing the course. Still.
Actually, I didn't look to make a comment. I think, uh, I I have some, um, some bona fides in this in that I coached high school wrestling for, uh, many, many years, not at this high school, but at another one. And, uh, I came across this circumstance multiple times. And I think while I'm sympathetic to what you're saying, the idea that we don't wanna, uh, we don't wanna lower the bar necessarily or get rid of the, um, a, uh, forcing factor or forcing function to to get kids to improve their academics, I would argue that there was also a significant number of kids where, um, to to, uh, to our athletic director's point is, uh, actively doing the very best they can under some challenging circumstances. And, uh, a lot of times that challenging circumstance, um, when it's, uh, when they're eliminated from competition in sport is almost like a cataclysmic second event that, um, does nothing to, uh, improve their attitude or their opportunity to to improve. If anything, it's it's more detrimental. And I think the key that I, the key to this is that even though we set a policy, we potentially set a policy here that says here's kind of the minimum standard, parents at any point can go to a coach and say, my kid can't play that. Or my kid can't, you know, that's a parental right. If they're concerned that they're not meeting their obligations as a student, as, you know, according to the standards of their own household. So, um, or, you know, for whatever reason, if there's behavioral concerns, or whatever, for whatever reason, a parent might decide, you have that ability to communicate with the coaches. So I think, you know, the thing that I would add is that while, you know, nobody likes to hear about a student getting an F, I think I saw in my ten years as a high school coach, a significant number of circumstances where it's, uh, it's not the predominance of the student athletes that are affected by this, but it's a handful. Uh, you said ten or twelve, I think, right? Ten or twelve. And I think this gives the administration the ability to make decisions about those ten or twelve with some flexibility in the best interest of those ten or twelve students without having any really dramatic impact on the entire rest of the kind of student athlete population. But it gives us a lot more flexibility to be proactive and positive, uh, in making decisions about those twelve versus having a standard cutoff that sort of eliminates the ability to make an individual decision on that person. So that's my two, my two cents as a former wrestler.
Anyone else? I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Briscoe.
Yeah, hi, um, Chairman Wors, I could, I could not agree more. I, um, for over twenty years was in charge of, um, high school students in multiple high schools who would be the beginning of looking at, do they need a five oh four plan? Did they need, uh, an assistance plan? Did they need a PPT or they just weren't doing well? And and almost to the one, I can say, having them get off in the football team or any of the teams, it was, it was a double negative. I could, I could never recommend that. In fact, I would recommend that we do, which I think we do do, everything we possibly can to support, um, and help the student, as our athletic director said, to at least, at least get that fifty. Don't bring the fifty-five, the sixty, learn, learn at least some, some content. I think, I think it's, I think it's the humanitarian thing to do, the right thing to do. And I really believe that at the end of the day, the students will learn more because they're not, you know, turned off because of their sports and their academics and just feel, feel hopeless. It gives them some pride and hope.
Any other comments or?
Um, just reading this, it says, first quarter eligibility will be determined by previous school year's fourth quarter grades, C minus average with no Fs. Should that say no more than one F? The, the, the challenge there is that because you're looking at the end of the year, you don't, they don't have any way of making it up. So, you know, if you allow the F, they have no way of continuing to work on it. That's why that one looks a little different. Okay. So if I got, so in the first quarter, if I got one F, say, fifty-five, I can play basketball. But in the fourth quarter, if I got fifty-five, I couldn't hit the ball in the fall? Right, right. That's what our current policy is.
He's saying the right of the, that doesn't work well.
Yeah. We, we had fooled around with it. I know that I think there was a version of this that had that. And, um, we were looking at summer school as being a possible outcome.
So I think, I, I don't have it in front of me, but I, I think, um, I, I think the language was a little confusing. But what we're actually trying to do is with that first quarter is look at fourth quarter, but also look at the whole year. Um, so that it alleviates the concern from some teachers, um, and guidance counselors that a student who only plays football in the fall, you know, kind of says, uh, it's fourth quarter. You know, I'm passing for the year. I can, I I can do what I want fourth quarter because I know I'm still gonna be eligible for football. So it takes into account both fourth quarter and the, the entire previous year's cumulative.
I think that's not what it says here. It says exactly what he said, so, uh, the first quarter eligibility will be determined by the previous school year's fourth quarter grades, C minus average with no Fs. It doesn't say anything about that, so I'm just.
That's the current, that's the current, though.
No, this, this is in blue, I think, right?
Yeah, that, that, just say that. Dr. Briscoe, can you chime in on that? You're there remotely.
Yeah.
Cause I know I think there was some conversation with school counselors that modified some things too.
Yeah, this, this has, um, definitely been a conversation that we've had to clarify this. I think initially, um, the understanding, it was misunderstood that it would be the full year grade that they could, if they were failing, they could then take summer school and bring that grade back up to passing. And that's not what it really was. And so the council had an issue with that. That's not what this is, um, that's not what it should be saying. I believe it should, should probably say that, just as the other quarters, it's fourth quarter grades. It's not their full year grades that we're looking at. We've never looked at their full year grades, just fourth quarter. So it would, it should agree with the other quarters as well, where if they have to have a C minus average and can only have one F. I think that probably is just, um, part of the confusion and and my understanding is that we should change that to, to be in agreement with every other quarter. It shouldn't be different just because it's fourth quarter going in first, because it's not a little grade that we're looking at.
Gotcha. Okay. Cause I think the previous language had wording about summer school, which doesn't address fourth quarter, addresses the fourth.
Yeah, where I got confused and I thought it was, originally I had put something in there about the previous year and basically saying if a student did fail a class for the year, um, to regain their eligibility for the fall, they need to, you know, take a credit recovery over the summer, just for the sake of encouraging them to to stay on track. Uh, but I think we missed that.
Okay.
So, so I have.
We'll, we'll make that modification then and put it back. The board doesn't need to act tonight, because this is just first reading. So this, this, these policies will show up under old business at the main meeting, at which point they'll, they'll be up for approval.
Okay.
We'll make that, that change.
Okay, so any, any other comments or questions about this particular policy?
Here, no, why don't we move on to the second policy?
So the school lunch charging, you'll notice, is, um, there are significant changes. And this is not due to, um, anything that we necessarily suggest that these are all legal requirements based upon, um, the new laws, in particular around, um, preventing students from being shamed if they don't have enough money for lunch. And, um, I think if you look kind of at the bottom of that first page, under charging meals, the third paragraph, it's got three bullets there, um, is, is kind of hits to the heart of this in that the board prohibits publicly identifying or shaming a student or any unpaid, for any unpaid meal charges, including but not limited to delaying or refusing to serve a meal to a student, designating a specific meal option for a student, or otherwise taking any discipline when action against a student. I can assure you that we don't do this now, so this isn't really going to necessitate us any change in how we work with our students. But it does codify, um, and supports the law in ensuring that we don't do it now and we don't do it in the future. Do you wanna add anything to this?
So, no, basically, I think everything. There was a law that was recently passed in legislative body that, um, basically prevents school systems from shaming students for, um, not paying their meals. Unfortunately, at some point, the family does need to pay up because of outstanding student obligations. They do get a call up on the money. So, and then the federal law states that at the end of the fiscal year, the debt cannot be in the school lunch fund. It needs to be paid off. So currently we use student subsidy funds to pay off student debts and that rules for, and during the year, attempts automated to reach out to parents and families and explain the situation. And after a certain number of meals, the students still owe and they're more unable to collect. That heads referred to the homeless liaison so that they investigate and try to assist the individual that they have.
How big a problem is this?
This year with the Alucard. So, well, part of it, I don't think we have about two hundred meetings.
I think I wrote also in here that there's some eligibility for donations to the board that accept donations, mitigate some of that. How does that get in?
So, um, if the community, anyone in the community wanted to, um, come forward with a donation for any student or students that have, who have any due, places on the student.
So it's not like a mass fund that's collected and then somebody here arbitrarily makes decisions about what gets paid out, it's finding.
We've, we've had some situations where a student may have money left over at the end and the, and the parents will ask that that money be used to reduce somebody else's or outstanding obligation. And and the reason for this is that, you know, there are some districts that a student may go up to the cashier and, and be denied lunch because, you know, you're overdrawn or, um, you know, rather than taking the lunch, you're given a cheese sandwich or something like that. Again, we don't do those, those things. As Eva said, that, that, the challenge is that it, it does allow students to build up in some cases, you know, have the balance. Ninety percent of those get paid off before they graduate because we require them to take care of all of their student outstanding obligations prior to getting their graduation gap. So there's, you know, a line. And as Eva said, we, we do a lot during the school year to encourage our students and parents, please, you know, pay up your, your, your debts.
So the food service director, which reports daily, she will be jumped via email to him. If she's running challenges or medication back, she reaches out to the administration for assistance. Gathers again, we've all, we recommend that people fill out the needs because, like, changes happen in the year for now. So if they're unqualified for the day, you have a qualified impact.
So is it, is it safe to say that at the end of the day, by the time they graduate, either it gets resolved because it's a debt that can be resolved, or it gets referred to somebody who can work through whatever social systems are available to resolve it? There's nobody not getting their diploma at the end of the day?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, no, everybody gets their diploma.
So one way or another, there's an appropriate resolution based on those. All right. Is there any other, any comments or other questions about this policy from the board?
And again, this, this language really reflects the current legal language.
Okay. Hearing none, let's move on to the last one.
And the last one is in regards to credit for online courses. In two thousand twenty, the board approved a policy for awarding credit for online courses following state Connecticut mandate that we make sure that we provide our students with options for online courses. So to be consistent with the law, we wanted to make sure we did that. What the, the additional blue underlying statements simply provide some context. Because what we're finding is that as online courses are now part of the landscape for high school students, there is an abundance of choices out there, some of them rigorous and challenging, and some of them falling far below the expectations that we would hold for students at Ram. So you'll notice that we're asking that the online criteria meet at least one of the four criteria listed there. So it's a course that's not offered at Ram High School. It's a, a high school does offer the course, but the student's unable to take the course due to an unavoidable scheduling conflict. The principal determines that the student requires a differentiated or accelerated learning environment with agreement from the students, teachers, and parents and guardians. We may have a student who requests to take an advanced math course that is not currently offered at their grade level, so they can advance, you know, in, in mathematics, which obviously tends to build upon the previous courses. Or the student has failed the course and wishes to recover credit. So we're just putting some, some guidelines on what's a policy that's already there. You'll notice that we didn't take anything out of the policy, we're just simply adding some of those criteria. And then on the, the second page, we did add that the principal or his, his or her designated has determined that, given the student's academic and disciplinary history, the student is appropriately suited to engage in online courses. We're, we want to make sure that we're not setting students up. There were some students that may thrive in an in-class course, but maybe not be well-suited for online. They haven't been successful over the past, so we want to make sure that it could fit those students. So we're not forcing them into learning environments that are going to leave their academic place.
Any comments or concerns on this policy or questions? Okay, hearing none. Let's, just a quick note on time, we're about ten minutes behind where we probably should be based on the schedule. So just going forward, everybody, gravity is our friend. We are moving on to ten point six, the financials.
Okay, so in ten point six, you have, the first financial is, basically, I'm projecting a net favorable position of two hundred eighty-two thousand three hundred forty-five dollars. In the next few weeks, we are doing a good bill down of open purchase orders and ensuring that amounts are still valid and/or if adjustments need to be made. So we might have more availability to report in, in May's board meeting. For revenue, we had anticipated student placement. So we receive, we are expecting to receive two thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and thirty cents in revenue, as well as four thousand dollars for students from East Hampton who are attending a pipeline in the faculty program. Our capital improvement fund has no significant changes at the moment. We have the anticipated completion of the HVA C project. And as of today, or as of Thursday, the project has been completed. So I'm expecting to see invoices based on the work that we've done. So we may see that fund have less availability. The capital not recurring fund, the town manager is still reaching out to the DOT. And there's communication back and forth, but there's no settlement on the project as of yet. And people services is continually tracking and changing DOs based on the IUP process and, and behavioral changes that might be happening during the suitable weather that might change placements for students. Are there any questions based on what I have reviewed? Hearing none. Ten point six B is the Ram Middle School and High School Student Activity Report. The balance is, balance with, reconciled with the bank account as of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Are there any questions in regards to the summer school and summer activity? So hearing none. Ten point six C is the Food Service Monthly Sale and Expenditure. We're doing well. We're, we're, seem to be increasing our net income for this fiscal year, which I'm very pleased about. And also ecstatic to report that the state and the federal government have come up with a, because of the supply chain issues and the higher costs and not being able to receive the, the DOD commodities, which in turn gives us a higher cost. Every school district had until April fifteenth to apply or accept a grant in each little school district, which has slotted to receive approximately twenty-six thousand dollars. Now, having stated that, if the school district do not meet the timeline of April fifteenth, which is a hard deadline, the money that is not spoken for will be developed. So it's possible that we might be able to get them up then to twenty-six thousand. But all of that money is to stay in the food service account. It is to help us buy those higher need items that unfortunately, because DOD, fresh fruits and vegetables might unfortunately have issues for supply chain and/or labor shortages that we can purchase at a different vendor and pay the asking price as opposed to the initial price that they would develop first. So any questions on the food service monthly report for March? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
All right. All right, eleven, committee reports.
We have ten seven, the Marlboro Walk. That's the additional.
Sorry, that's, I bet. Thank you very much for that.
I, I, I think it might be more a support of, of, of community supportive mental health walk.
Okay. Walk for a minute. Okay. So I think, was it Sue? Sue, that you raised this?
Yeah, you know, I raised it. I'll turn it over to Judy, if that's okay. Are you okay taking this one?
Yeah, yeah, sure. So, and so as I said, this conversation has been going on for a long time. The reason that we're looking at Marlboro for the first week of June is Marlboro runs many events around the lake. It's just the perfect distance. I live over here, so I go through that traffic all the time. There are, you know, there are runs, there are walks, there are cyclists. So I, I reached out to Greg Lowry and Sue, and Sue reached out to AHM. And our, I can tell you, our town is very supportive. Greg is, and then a gentleman who I just met, Jake Keigho, if anybody knows him. I guess he runs all, all of our safety and oversight. And, you know, he, he spoke about just keeping him updated to make sure he knows what to do, you know, with streets. He thinks that just what he has for assistance is probably appropriate. Like, he knows how to man these things. And the reason we're not decided on the exact day is we're waiting to hear back from Parks, Parks and Rec Ray, Ray Bowl, because there are a couple of things happening at the, oh my goodness, the Pendolia. And so we're, what Greg Lowry and the other gentleman, they suggested that we, you know, we pick the best time that works with all of that. And they feel like they can accommodate a lot of parking, that they've done it before. NAMI is supporting, which is the National Association of Mental Illness. And then AHM reached out, and they want to speak with Sue and I tomorrow. So what we're looking for is that it can be a supported, or by supported meaning verbal support of a community. And, and I think the, the, we also have Teresa Bryce-Joe is on the team. There are a bunch of people, actually. Catherine Assanto, I guess, is a screen printer, graphic designer. And the proposal right now is you're not alone with kind of, you know, a reputable phone number or website and that, that people could have for information. That it'd be a small fee to walk just to pretty much cover the T-shirts. And then the additional amount would go to either AHM or NAMI or, or VOP. If, you know, it would, that's, and we're hoping to do it basically to raise community awareness, not really to raise money. You asked me to be brief. Is that brief enough?
No, that was fantastic. Thank you. I, I had a couple of questions. So the, if we're looking, you're, you're targeting the event for June. When, when do people, when would people probably sign up for this? Because it feels like maybe, maybe our main meeting with a, with an official kind of motion, it, maybe that's, maybe that's the appropriate timing to communicate this to Strong Mr. I, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, do we, is it, is it appropriate to make a motion tonight to support this?
I, I, I think we should do tonight because as soon as, you know, a lot of people are doing a lot of things. You know, Sue had a lot of contacts to reach out to and with AHM. And we want to get it on social media and people's calendars as soon as possible. So, so I think it'd be preferable to get it tonight. As I said, we were going to join the NAMI date, but, and we know that with weekends, something is going to be problematic for people. But we think it's the best, it's the best date that doesn't, isn't high school or college graduations. So I, I mean, what we're looking for, and certainly, you know, would, would take as much help as Penny or any, anybody wanted, you know, a voice at the table. It's a pretty, it's not a huge thing. It's more about you matter, you're not alone, and raising awareness, because we realize we don't have a lot of time. And so we're not, we're, we're not overdoing it.
Okay. So is there, what's the motion, I guess?
Well, I think the motion would be to, that we, that we could say, if we probably would want to say anyway, but the Ram community, you know, event, because we, we've had a lot of hardship in, in the Ram community. So I think it's, I think it's more like ceremonial, or not that we're really asking to do anything other than to, to be in support at this point. And, and certainly, you know, like you and Scott are always available by, by texting and everything. You know, we've already thought about the traffic and if, if police are needed, you know, about, about a lot of, a lot of the things. So we're not anticipating asking Ram for anything at this point.
Okay, so like I said, I guess what I'm just looking for is what's, what, what motions, what statement, what, what's the motion statement? Just so we, as we make a, even if it's ceremonial, what, what, so we can do a discussion.
Sure. So, so I think this, the motion would maybe be, I make a motion to support a community walk that supports mental health for other Ram reasons and beyond.
Okay. I don't want to be, I just want, I, I agree with that. Like, okay, let's just, I, I agree with that motion, but might have some questions about it. Is there a second for that?
I'll second Sue.
Okay. Discussion? It's, I mean, it's ceremonial. But I, but I, the only question I have about this is, I just want to be careful about using the word support, because that sort of, I feel like maybe there might be some indication that we're obligating ourselves to something. Is there a better word than support?
Can you endorse it? I'd say endorse.
Endorse, maybe? Endorse a community walk?
Sure, that's, that's fine. And, and Sue, what do you say? Yeah, I, I'm fine with endorse.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion about this motion? All right, so the motion is to endorse a community walk for community mental health support in the Ram community and beyond. Let's go. A, a voice call. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Erica Staines. That motion carries. All right. Thank you. All right, committee reports. We are at the, what, what, is it that one? All right, so we're looking like we're, we're in okay shape. We brought up a little bit here. Committee reports. Facilities, traffic, safety, and transportation.
Nothing new to report. Our next meeting is November twenty-sixth. We have an opportunity to go through quotes.
Absolutely.
Quotes for assessment of the athletic.
Great. Okay. Finance, audit, compliance, and insurance committee. Lori's not with us. Is anybody, either Dr. Benz, Clark, or Mary, or Eric, anybody have anything to put up?
No.
We just didn't have our, our, our last meeting because we're in the middle of the project.
Okay. Negotiations? I don't think there's any negotiations occurring at this time, so we're okay there. Anything to add to that, Dr. Benz and Clark?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Policy? Again, Jessica's not with us today, but either Carrie or Dave, anything that we need to discuss?
Yeah, so our last meeting was, I'm not sure if you exactly, it really occurred before March fourth meeting.
Yeah.
And we basically were informed of the policies that we noted on previously. Eligibility, participation in cooperative activities, school lunch charging, and credit for online courses.
Okay. All right, thank you. And program communication? Mary?
We have a meeting coming up this week on Thursday.
Okay. Facilitators, Eastcon and Dr. Benz and Clark?
Just, just to share that there's an interim executive director at Eastcon. And there's a search for executive director for Eastcon at this, at this time. And nothing, nothing new, other than what you've been getting from.
Okay. And it's, same thing for Kate?
Yes, yes. You should all be receiving the mail from Kate, yeah.
Okay. Move on to public comment. And I ask you this every meeting, but do I need to read this again?
You don't, because we've agreed once.
Okay. Okay. Item number twelve, public comment. Is there anybody present? Please.
Okay, my name is Carol Dyer. I'm representing the Hebron Coalition on Diversity and Equity. And I was here to support the. and I was here to support the students and their presentation for the modification to the Columbus Day holiday. I'm a little disappointed, as you can imagine. I'm mostly disappointed that the students really didn't have any opportunity to respond to the questions, the warning questions. I heard some very heartfelt comments, and I appreciate that. Code would, I don't think I'm stepping out of line here to say that Code would definitely assist with, one of our goals is to increase community awareness, and some of the comments that I did here tonight were, I thought, simplistic and lacked any real appreciation for the fact that when white people arrived here within a small amount of time, a couple of hundred years, by the time of the revelation, Native, Native indigenous people were run off of their land and out of their homes. And in a place like Hebron, Marlboro, Andover, where there's a huge, rich history of indigenous populations here, and today, very little, I think there's an awareness factor that we could probably help you address, and Devon O'As, we'll reach out to Scott, if that's something Lori liked. I think that it would be wonderful if we could tell the students that at some point this could be reconsidered. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present? Yes, please.
All right, so I, just regarding.
Could you identify yourself, please, I'm sorry?
I'm Jason Harrison, I'm from Hebron. I'm a student at Ram. I would like to speak about the Columbus Day issue. So I, I have read and studied Columbus personally, and that sort of history of this very sensibly. I've written about it in the Ramler newspaper, and I would just like to say that studying this, I think that this change to indigenous people's day would not be a good change. I, I've studied this sensibly, and I think that the sort of, the real sort of injustices that Native Americans have faced from throughout history, I think that now in Columbus is frankly just inaccurate, sort of, Columbus personally showed a lot of grace towards the Americans, he, you know, did the things that punished fellow standers who would have used this, he showed a lot of sympathy to them. And I think that making this change is not representative of actual history, you know, looking through primary sources, and that's the thing, I don't think that it's, is good to, and sort of historical guilt on Columbus, because he personally was not someone who committed any sort of atrocities. And just to speak on the points of changing to Columbus Day slash Indigenous People's Day specifically, I personally don't think that is a very good idea, because it's just sort of watering that Columbus Day, and I don't, I oppose Indigenous People's Day because it's, I don't like the idea of having a, a holiday that sort of celebrates a racial group as like a monolith, I don't think that that's very good, I don't think that's representative of our values, and I know that I've spoken to, you know, a lot of people, and they don't think that this is, I think that they view Columbus Day as just a nice holiday, and they don't really see why it's so volatile. That's just my sense, I oppose changing Columbus Day, and I thank the board for your decision, and I, I support it.
Good, thank you. Anybody else present? Yes, sir.
Can I just have a follow-up comment?
If you could just identify yourself again.
Sure, Gary Goff here, on my movie comment.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, could you identify yourself again?
Yeah, my name is Gary Goff here, resident of Hebron.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, I'm just following up on my comment earlier on the use of the movies as a teaching tool in school here, and, you know, comments followed up after I had made mine, somewhat dismissing what I had come to the board to express was what I thought was a pretty serious concern, and, you know, the arguments on the other side is, it's a form of critical thinking, and I just feel as though when you look at some of these movies, and I won't get into the details, but there are several of those movies that are much more manipulative in their portrayal of some of the subject matter, and it's not really a child's place to try to make sense of what is being presented to them. I just find some of these movies somewhat embellish the facts, they don't give all of the facts, and they portray one side of a story, and not necessarily multiple stories. And I think that's somewhat too much of an influence today's, to today's youth, and I think we have to look at that a little bit more carefully before we put that into the schools as a method to teach our children. You know, the motorcycle diaries, if you look a little bit into the details of that particular movie, it, for the most part glamorizes a terrorist and talks about him as a revolutionary. And I just have real issues with that, and that's one movie out of the four that I mentioned earlier that really have some, some messages there that I think are inappropriate to be used in a school setting. I know when I went to school, movies were a form of entertainment, a lot of humor in there, and more cartoons, now we're using them as a method to replace the teacher, and I just think that there has to be a serious look at these movies before they're introduced, if they shouldn't even be used at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online here? Yes. I'm sorry, it's Lily.
Lily Rhodes with, in Hebron.
Please, go ahead.
I have three things. One is, I encourage the students to continue to educate us about the complex issue regarding the Columbus versus Native American versus whatever naming of the holiday. It's, it is a complicated issue, and I commend them for trying to educate us about that. I have to say, I, I don't see any benefit to dismissing the disrespect it shows to our Native American neighbors to dismiss their concerns around this issue, and I commend the whole school system for addressing this as regards the Raptors, the name versus the Sajin's name, and I know it's complicated, I know it's sensitive, but I hope the students are able to come back to us with some more information on that. A second issue is regarding the smart pass that's been discussed this evening. What contingency is there for electronic failure? I'm not asking for an answer for that right now, but it just occurs to me, there's a huge presumption of reliable electronic communication as regards the benefit of this program. And the third thing that I want to ask about has to do with scholarships for the overnight trips. I am hopeful that there are robust scholarship opportunities for students to participate in the overnight trips, and also the athletic programs, because we know from the studies we've done on housing in Hebron, that a lot of people, residents of Hebron, which is where I am, are financially distressed with the, having to pay significantly more than thirty percent of their income for housing, which means they don't have a lot of money available for things like trips to France or wherever, and athletic fees. So I would hope that those issues are also compassionately addressed by the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online to present for public comment? Eric Senior? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item number thirteen, the informational items are presented. Scott, anything that we need to cover on these?
Nope.
That being the case, I guess any questions from the board regarding the informational items, either the calendar of events or student discipline? All right, that being the case, is there a motion for adjournment? Kate makes a motion for adjournment, any second?
Like that.
All right, who's that, Carrie? Okay. And just do a voice vote, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, good night.